Good afternoon and welcome to the July 2020 meeting of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees. As you can see, this is an unusual meeting as we follow COVID-19 protocols, including masks on campus, which are required everywhere on our campus. We are meeting in the boardroom with four trustees. Trustee Smith Everett and trustee Cross are appearing via Zoom. Trustee Lawson, if she's not on the meeting now, she will be here.
She's there.
She's here, okay. Trustee Lawson is here as well. So we're all here. We have a quorum and we will proceed with the meeting as with part of us here and part of us on Zoom in compliance with the Kansas Open Meetings Act and the guidance of the Kansas Attorney General. This meeting is available to observe by Zoom and by audio. And we also have an open forum period that is available by signing up on the website by 5:00 PM the day before the meeting. So if we'll start our meeting in a normal fashion, please join me in honoring our country with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I would be remiss if I didn't note that on my left is the new president of Johnson County Community College, Dr. Andy Bound, who comes to us from Ivy Tech in Indiana, where he was the chief operating officer of the Indiana Community College System, previously with Grand Rapids Community College. And I know he has some remarks to make during the president's report, but I wanted to make sure we welcomed you first and tell you how much we're looking forward to working with you to better our learning and teaching environment and serve our community.
Thank you. It's a privilege to be here.
Welcome to Johnson County. Next item on the agenda would be our open forum. The open forum is a period in each regular meeting when members of the public can make comments regarding items of interest to them. You'd be allowed five minutes unless there are a significant number of speakers, in which case the chair may reduce that to three minutes. In order to be recognized, an individual must register online so long as we are in Zoom categories. And the registration, as I indicated, closes at 5:00 PM the day before so we can organize the Zoom invites. When addressing the board, registered speakers are expected to remain respectful or encouraged to address individual personnel or student matters directly with the appropriate college department. As a practice, the college does not respond in this setting when the matter involves a personnel matter, student issues, or matters that are being addressed otherwise through the college grievance procedure or otherwise subject to review by the college or the board. We have one registered speaker tonight. Chris Rozell has registered. Chris, give me a minute while they elevate you to speaker status and then please give your name and address and we will accept your comments.
Good. My name is Chris Rozell. I live in Roland Park, Kansas. Tonight I am requesting you to pass a policy regarding student voter registration, civic education, and turnout at JCCC. We are Kansans. I'm making appeal to your reason. We are the home of bleeding Kansas, of John Brown, of Vernon Lawrence, of five constitutions, of populism, of progressivism, of the appeal to reason, of carry nation, and the eight states to introduce suffrage. In sum, we are leaders and activists in policymaking. Yet JCCC, to my knowledge, has no policy to register students as voters, raise their awareness, and turn them out to vote. No goal, no measure, no strategy. Can this be? As you know, I was a student here from 2015 to 2019, taking courses in many departments. In 2015, I became aware of JCCC's 13.8% turnout among 18- to 20-year-olds as compared to over 70% of students my age in 2014. After that, I came to you and suggested improvements. I also helped students register in the dining area with the League of Women Voters and suggested different wording for the Higher Education Act email that JCCC sends out before each election. Some of my suggestions have been accepted, some ignored. We have progressed. Thank you. But for me, it is not enough until young citizens gain the access, awareness, and motivation that I got with age. Education is supposed to accomplish that, isn't it? But it doesn't at JCCC. Why not? Why are our young students less than half as engaged in the election process as people my age? One reason is life has been my educator, not the college. So we older people figure out how, what, and why to be engaged. But can't we teach and facilitate the lessons of life? That's what education is supposed to do. Make it so that youth don't have to repeat the ignorance and mistakes of the previous generation. Aren't students, as Newton said, supposed to stand on the shoulders of the giants who have gone before, learning from them? Do we pretend to accomplish that with no policy, no goals, no measures, no strategy, and no continual improvement? No. Why am I passionate about voting? Let me explain. When I was a seminarian, JFK was assassinated. When I was in the Air Force Academy, Martin Luther King and Robert Kennedy were murdered. When I was in the Peace Corps in Guatemala and heard over VOA, Nixon was impeached and resigned. Lately, when I was in Uganda working to improve life in a rural village when coronavirus broke out. I know from experience, government and elections are important. Participation should not be left to chance. Yet to some degree at JCCC, it is. Therefore, I ask you, the board, to pass a policy that JCCC's young citizens will be involved in. We, the people, as people my age are, require significant improvement each election until that goal is achieved. We are the Kansans that tip the balance in the Union to freedom. Let's take up the banner of our forefathers and foremothers. I ask you to pass a policy that we will produce engaged citizens. Set a goal, a measure, and accountability. Let the administration be held accountable and figure out how to achieve it, but set the policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. I think one of the things we will, one of the reports we will hear later today during the president's report will address that very issue with the task force on campus that is undertaking exactly that goal. So we will hear that later in the meeting. And moving on to the board reports, I saw Mr. Carter, I believe, on Zoom, Dick Carter, our government affairs lobbyist. Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me clearly?
Well, clearly, yes. You are loud and clear.
Very good. Let me just make a few highlights of the written report that was submitted to you, starting with the budget. Revenues were down for fiscal year 20. That's the fiscal year that the state just ended on June 30th, to the tune of about $437.7 million. We're still looking at that $1.4 billion shortfall at the end of fiscal year 2021, which we just began. The next consensus revenue estimating meeting will be approximately on or before December 4th. And that's about the same time that new leaders will be elected in both the House and the Senate following the November elections. That's usually the timeframe that they meet and elect their own leaders. With regards to allotments where budgets have been reduced in fiscal year 2021, there's a $26.3 million swap from the Emergency Education Relief Funds for state general fund dollars. So really, that's a zero-sum gain. And then in total, there's about a $45 million total reduction for the region system, which includes $8.5 million to the CTE in fiscal year 2021. And I would note that in my printed report, it says in fiscal year 2002. Clearly, spell checker doesn't catch numbers and that should read fiscal year 2021. Something that we've been following very closely is the dark store theory issue as it relates to property tax appeals. Just this, earlier this summer, Thomas Brown Jr. was confirmed by the Senate Confirmation Committee to be the chief hearing officer for the Board of Tax Appeals. His confirmation allows hearings to continue. There was a brief period there where there was a shortfall of a total of three votes from that Board of Tax Appeals. There are still a couple of appointments to be made. It is one incredible, difficult position to fill just based on the requirements and the workload that exists with that group. So I wanted to update the board on that so that hearings can continue at this point. I want to focus the majority of my comments on the future of Higher Education Council. That group met today. And as you'll recall, at the last board meeting, the council met the same day that the Board of Trustees met as well. They're continuing, it continues to be all about community colleges. We have yet to see that group break into conversations or discussion topics as it relates to universities. And for the most part, technical colleges are not being talked about either. That concerns me a great deal. I mentioned that at the last trustee meeting. The thing that was most bothersome today was that the agenda included a topic covering a controversial cost model. And that issue in and of itself was made very clear to board staff back in January that the information contained in their charts is inaccurate. And there was an agreement that it would not be discussed in the same manner again. Not only was it used in today's council hearing, it was further broken down by institution. Trustee Nancy Ingram read a statement from KACC T noting that all 19 community college presidents were opposed to the method being used to calculate the cost models. Senator Baumgartner spoke on behalf of the community college system and indicated that it was known that the information was inaccurate and questioned why it was being presented. Representative Woodard also mentioned that similar issues were presented in the House Education Budget Committee and it was noted at that time that the numbers were inaccurate there as well. So why board staff continues to choose to present inaccurate information is beyond those of us that have been participating in the Future of Higher Education Council hearings. The next topics to be discussed are equity gap models and best practices that have been occurring at various institutions. The next meeting will be August 18th of 2020. And then finally, just a couple of final comments. Yesterday, the governor announced that there will be a later start date for K-12. There will be an executive order forthcoming announcing that schools will start on September 9th, which is after, or following Labor Day. The Kansas State High School Athletic Activities Association is still discussing what that means in their realm. And this issue presents some issues for dual enrollment, specifically with some of our students who come to us from the K-12 sector starting a little bit later. And so I know that there will be some ongoing conversations about that. I know that KACC T has requested a meeting with the governor to further discuss this. And then finally, August 4th is the primary. That's just right around the corner. There are some races that have no primaries. That will change the lay of the land after the primary and moving on to the general in November. So, Mr. Chairman, I would stop there and be pleased to attempt to answer any questions if there are any.
All right. I intend to do questions today with those here in the room first and then I will go to the three of you on Zoom, if that's okay. So anybody in the room, Dr. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Carter. Under your report from the LBC, the Legislative Budget Committee, my question is under a lot, the paragraph of allotments, you indicated that the budget director is forecasting an amount that will be $704.4 million, less than zero. I want to make sure that I understand that. Does that mean it's going to be a negative 704 million? I've never seen the terminology "less than zero" like that before.
Yeah, correct. I took that directly from the Kansas Legislative Research Department's report. And that is an amount that would be less than zero because the state is required to have a balanced budget. And so moving forward, those numbers, when added all up at the end of fiscal year 2021, will be approximately $1.5 billion.
Well, my simple understanding, does that then mean that one item is minus 704 million?
Yes.
Thank you. The second question I have is that regarding the future of Higher Education Council, and I've not had a chance to discuss it with trustee Ingram, but from your perspective, what is the target date for some agreement as to whatever they're discussing and implementation?
Trustee Cook, to me, it's unclear. We do not know how many meetings they intend to have. The agendas are sent out in a short fashion right before, at least to observers or participants who would like to observe just before the meetings happen. Due to COVID, we're not even allowed in the room. I thought it was interesting today that the Board of Region CEO made a comment that it was an open meeting, which is true, but we're not even allowed to have input as far as sectors, individuals, participants in the higher education system. It's a bit concerning. I would assume that they plan to have a report available by the beginning of the legislature, but it should also be noted that this is not a legislatively created council.
Thank you.
Trustee Ingram, do you have any questions?
No, I do not.
Trustee Cross? Any questions?
Yeah. The opportunity, Mr. Chair, if I may?
You may.
Okay. I appreciate trustee Cook's question. So I don't know that it's a question too much for Mr. Carter or you, Mr. Chair, or anyone, but that means on some level, if we have an allotment of 704 million, we need to do our part and find the money in our budget or account for it accordingly. Do I understand that correctly?
Well, are you asking me or the chair?
I'll start with you. I like talking to you. That's fine.
I think that we know for certain that we have, we will be missing out on our portion of the $8.5 million for career and tech ed. There's a small portion as well as far as contributions to death and disability for capers. And I don't know what that number looks like broken out across the system or specifically to our institution. But overall, it's 3.5 million. Chances are likely that's a fairly, that's a much smaller number for us. With regard to the rest of the state budgeting process, typically Kansas collects taxes on April 15th. Yesterday was July 15th, the delayed date for both state and federal. And it's a little bit unknown at this point how many were still outstanding. At least, we haven't seen a report that's comprehensive how many payers were still outstanding and took advantage of the delayed date. So I think there's a whole host of issues that are in play that make up what the future budgeting scenarios look like.
So in short, we'll have some small part, certainly not 704 million. I'm not trying to overblow it. I'm just saying we need to account for it, find the cuts or get the revenue to offset whatever our, or any institution's share might be. Right? Sorry to boil it down, but I only have so many jobs here.
Point well taken.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Trustee Lawson, do you have any questions for Mr. Carter?
I do not.
Trustee Smith Everett?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Carter, two questions about the Higher Ed Council. And I apologize if you've said this in the past and if you have and you can refer me to where in our past board packets, like what month that is. I will be happy to go there instead of having you answer. But can you briefly explain the origins of this group again? Because since you said they weren't legislatively appointed, which is what I first, my understanding was. I'd like to have a better understanding of how they were appointed. And then second question is these cost models that they're using that are erroneous. What are the conversations around these cost models that they're having? What is it that they are discussing in terms of how the money and the cost models intersect with their work?
Let me tackle your second question first because I think it's an excellent question. And I'm not sure that any of us can give you a good answer that have been participating and observing the process. The cost models deal with sort of a method that is not, not one that's used in the community college system or in the state university system. They talk about a third of the money for community colleges being from the state, a third of the money being from local taxes, and a third of the money being from tuition. That model is not accurate at all, at all, for any of the community colleges. In fact, it's very different for most all of the community colleges. And what they're trying to get at, we are not certain. We know that this came from a, not a trustee, a regent member late last fall. And I think it might have even been mentioned as early as their board retreat in August of last year, if I'm not mistaken. I'm not sure what their target goal is for producing the information. We just know that it's not an accurate portrayal or representation of the way budgets are developed or that expenditures and revenues are taken and received in the community college system. That's the best answer I can give right now. With regard to the origin of the council, there was a write-up in last month's report that would probably be a good refresher. I thought about just copying and pasting it or cutting it into the current report that I sent out earlier this week, just as a refresher. But it was a conversation in a budget committee hearing, but there was no recommendation in legislation. Nothing came out of that. This is something that the Board of Regents has created and they have included legislators on the committee as well as a member or representative from each sector of higher education.
Thank you very much, Mr. Carter. That concludes my questions, Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Ingram.
Yes, and trustee Smith Everett, just to give you a little more information, what actually occurred at some point earlier this year was that our executive director of KACC T found out that this committee was being formed and there was no one from the community college sector who was going to participate. So she basically negotiated and I won't say, I'll just say negotiated to have someone, you know, serving in that role. So as KACC T president, I was given that responsibility. And then they also named Jim Lewis, who is a trustee from Dodge City, Dodge City Community College. And Mr. Lewis had just been appointed as a trustee, I believe. Is that correct, Mr. Carter?
I do believe that's correct, yes.
I believe that's correct. He attended the meeting last month on Zoom and so I have not met him. He was actually not able to be there today, so I have not yet met him. But we were made aware of the cost model and our executive director then visited with the Council of Presidents. Clearly, there was concern about that and they did not support the usage of the cost model. There's some history to that and to how that has come into play. They, I think it was last December, maybe at the K-Board retreat, they presented some of this information. KACC T as well as TEA said this is not accurate information. There was an agreement made that they would not utilize that information in the graphs. And the way that it was produced, anyway, just as simple to say in their presentation, they used that presentation for us again. And so that's when the Council of Presidents agreed that we needed to respond to that. And so that's what I did today, just letting them know that it was inaccurate and we did not support that. So it was very clear in my message to them today that that was the case. So they'll have to figure that out, I guess, Mr. Carter. We didn't really have a response to it, but they will be meeting and they know that we were not pleased with that usage. That help?
I think we would all agree that if they, the state would fund one-third of our costs instead of 14% or 15%, we could do a great job with our students in lowering tuition and even helping our property taxpayers. I know Dr. Bound's going to talk about this later in the rate, in the budget thing, but with respect to state funding, does the budget take into account where they are in Topeka?
It does. In the preliminary budget, proposed budget, we've been working with a 15% reduction in state funding.
That goes to trustee Cross, your question about making sure we're conservative in that as well. I see no more questions. Mr. Carter, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
We'll move on now to the Faculty Association. Dr. Jim Leicher, president of our faculty union. Welcome, Jim.
Thank you. This is the first time I've been at a podium wearing one of these.
You look good.
Thank you. 2020s a year for a lot of firsts. I have not mastered the skill of talking without my glasses fogging up. So show me some patience if you don't mind. I want to start my report by extending an official welcome to Dr. Bound. So on behalf of the people who teach the classes here and the Faculty Association specifically, welcome to our community and I wish you the best of luck here in your administration.
Thank you. As you might guess, my report tonight deals exclusively with the effects of COVID-19. Two days ago, of course, Governor Kelly announced that schools will not reopen until after Labor Day. Last weekend, the lieutenant governor invited feedback on social media concerning possible reopening. Within two days, more than 1,500 replies flowed in, mostly from teachers, some proclaiming a desire to get back to the classroom, but more of them expressing worry and outrage. I found particularly insightful the comments, some of which used words like patronizing and condescending when describing a request for input so close to the time when decisions are being made. Apparently, it's a habit in some educational circles of not getting faculty at the planning table early. I mentioned that in my report last week and it is a concern shared evidently by our K-12 partners. To be fair, as I'm following these accounts, both from the K-12 districts and higher ed, I can sincerely say JCCC is doing a far, far better job than most. Credit is due a lot of you in this room, especially Dr. McLeod and who is not in this room, the Instructional Dean's Council. As early as March, faculty and chairs were hearing a steady, consistent message concerning the fall schedule. If you don't have to teach on campus, don't. As you know, more than 80% of our sections are being offered virtually. While we're waiting for enrollment numbers to tell us if the online and hybrid classes we've created will meet demand, faculty here have an advantage that our peers at KU and other four-year schools don't, namely a plan that's been in place for months. At least in terms of instruction and corresponding preps, we've avoided the confusion and the inconsistency that's plaguing many colleges and universities. That's not to say there aren't still some obstacles. What I'm hearing anecdotally from faculty doing summer classes and spring teach-outs is that the new COVID class of students is comprised of a lot of people holding full-time jobs or shouldering parental duties while attempting a full summer load of nine credit hours. That has led to an increase in student complaints about too much assigned work, professors' inflexibility with deadlines, and constant attempts to negotiate exemptions claiming COVID-related incidents. Some are still predicting an enrollment bump come August, but this first run over the summer suggests that the kind of students we may be attracting are entering with different expectations than what we've seen before. How to meet those expectations while not sacrificing academic standards might be one of the challenges that we're facing. Over the past month, the Faculty Association has fielded hundreds, I'm sorry, not hundreds, dozens of concerns by our members, which were either directed through dozens of concerns by our members, which were either directed through conventional channels or communicated to me personally. Since these are likely to increase as more faculty return to campus, I want to provide a heads-up about what to expect. These concerns can be boiled down to two kinds: lack of specific guidance in instructional spaces and a shared governance problem in the counseling area. I'm going to address them in that order. On July 6th, more than a dozen instructional faculty returned to complete spring semester teach-outs. As of July 2nd, I was receiving several messages a day from instructors wanting clarification about the college's mask policy. Can professors require it on their syllabus? Can they call security if a student refuses to comply? Can the mask policy be waived in areas where smell is necessary for the learning experience? And so on and so on. Since then, the Governor's Order and the decision of Johnson County Commissioners not to overruler has made it easier to provide specific guidelines, which we much appreciate. But beside the fact that those guidelines came down to the wire, faculty are still reporting a lack of knowledge and training when it comes to on-the-spot decisions. For example, when should a student be excused from class due to a COVID-related affair? I think my colleagues and I understand the general policies well enough, but when it comes to specifics about certain rooms and individuals with unique circumstances, instructors feel that they lack direction and they're unsure about their legal liabilities if they make a bad call. Now, I acknowledge administration's stab here at shared governance by not trying to dictate a one-size-fits-all approach and respecting the authority of departments and divisions to adapt accordingly. It's very possible at heart this is a communication issue. If so, then my communication to you is the following: even the best-written policies require some interpretation. Faculty are not very comfortable doing any interpretation without backup, and so far the backup we've received has not been of a kind to create confidence. Put another way, Board members, you're faced with a once-in-a-century scenario, a faculty actually wanting to be told what to do. Now, there's been some progress on this in the last day or two. Dr. Weber and Elisa Pacer and I have agreed on a plan by which the Academic Branch Council, the A B C, could serve as a communication bridge that would take some of I R T's general policies and be able to tailor them for classroom use. So I think we're moving ahead on that. There's concern number one. It's a different story with concern number two regarding our counselors. When the college shut down in March, counseling faculty did an amazing job transitioning their advising duties into virtual settings. On June 22nd, over objections by them but at administration's insistence, a new system was implemented that brings three counselors to campus at a time. That number is scheduled to increase to six in late July. There are several issues worthy of discussion here, but perhaps the core is the one that I hear trustees ask the most: what is best for students? I encourage you to examine the data, a number of walk-in students served by three counselors in face-to-face settings during the course of a day compared to the same number those three could be serving through scheduled or even impromptu online appointments. I encourage you to consider morality and equity. Instructional faculties' professional expertise on how best to serve students in their respective disciplines is rarely challenged. No dean or vice president has ever tried to tell me how to teach history. Yet counseling faculty are saying an equivalent level of respect is not accorded to them in their field of student advising. I'm going to share a few tidbits from recent correspondence on both of these concerns, names withheld to protect the innocent. First, why was it good to close the college in March when COVID cases were practically nil, but okay to open now when numbers are skyrocketing? Is it because young people are mostly spreaders and we don't care as much for old employees as we do young students? Another, is there a document we can send to students before they come to class with instructions about what to do and not do if they think they've been exposed? Are we leaving it up to each instructor to write their own set of rules? Not everybody is qualified to do that. And a third, the CDC says people of my age shouldn't be around others, but the college is telling me age is not a reason not to come to campus. I've been doing everything from home that I can on campus, so how is it I'm being defined as an essential worker? In these situations, I've encouraged faculty to work with their chairs and deans, but as you can see from their nature, these questions are decided far above that kind of level. So I've tried to aim my advocacy at the places where decisions are made, and I admit I've ruffled some feathers in the process, for which I make no apologies. To be clear, most of us understand the enormous burden of decision-making right now. You're grappling with questions like, do we have too many people on campus or not enough? Are we offering enough face-to-face classes, or are we jeopardizing lives by offering too many? Should we provide more rules, but if we do, are we going to be accused of micromanaging? This is a no-win. I get it. I have two specific asks. One, that your choices be informed by data and not perception, that people not be put in harm's way based on some instinctive but unsupported need to look open. Second and more important, I ask that you take the advice I give students to get beyond the root causes of, I'm sorry, to get beyond the tear stains of history and look at root causes. The pandemic has biological origins, but it continues to spread because of a crisis in education, namely, people who don't have it are doing foolish things. COVID-19 has only accelerated trends that have been dogging us for a long time, trends that pull us away from respect for specialized knowledge and toward a view that all opinions are equal. We lose track easily in our constant discussions about success rates that our real purpose is to produce educated minds, which means accepting the principle that experts matter. Two Spanish professors can disagree over the best way to translate a document, but the person who can't read Spanish has no business in that conversation. Likewise, there's no difference of opinion about the advisability of wearing these to slow the pandemic. There are those who finished medical school whose opinion matters, and there's everybody else. What is a certificate or a degree if not an institutional promise that this person has achieved a level of expertise in a given field which benefits the rest of us? I've never been a fan of the business model of running a college, but let's assume that it works. The first rule in any business is never undermine the value of your own product. Given that we sell credentials here, I hope that respect for credentials and the expertise that come with them is something that we are promoting every day. That concludes my report.
Jim, I, there's stuff in there to quibble about, but I very much appreciate your observation that we should rely on data and not perception. I think there's been an effort to do that, maybe not well implemented, but on this campus for several years. And I certainly also agree that people that have an expertise, or subject matter experts, ought to be those we listen to. I will disagree with you, because there are better M Ds out there that will say we don't need these, and I ought to come over there and give you a hug. So I wish there was some monolithic expert opinion based on data that we could all follow. One thing I want to mention for the public teaching, either Dr. Bound or you, what does "spring teach-out" mean? Because that's a phrase that's
We're talking here about classes that were, classes offered in the spring semester that were not able to be completed online, things like food service, welding, kind of hard to do that one virtually. So these instructors were brought back through the month of July to do a set of what we're calling "teach-outs," two- to four-hour class sessions, simply to finish those students from the spring semester.
Thank you. I wanted to make sure that the public heard that, because it's a new phrase that I don't think I'd heard until COVID-19. Questions from anybody in the room? Anybody online? Raise your hand. Trustee Smith Everett?
Always, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Dr. Leicher. I have two comments, I guess. The first one is for our Cabinet members, probably Dr. Weber or Dr. McLeod, in terms of keeping track of the students that we serve and having a data point that we can refer to. So I know that one of the things about this Fall that will be different is we'll have a lot more options virtually and via Zoom for our students receiving student services. Is it possible that we can get ongoing data about that for trustees, just a sense of how many walk-in people we're serving versus how many we are serving virtually?
I'm sure that's available and that can be provided through Learning Quality or to the Board directly. I'm looking at Dr. Weber. He's nodding, Laura.
Okay, I was going to say, if you could tell me there's a nod somewhere, that'd be great. The second thing is I just wanted to comment and say, Dr. Leicher, I appreciate that, I think I heard in there the request for faculty to be told exactly what to do for the first time ever.
Don't hold me too much to that literally.
I appreciate that. I want to just say, as I said in our retreat, and as I said to my own colleagues in K-12, that with all of this, we must extend grace to one another. There is no precedent. There is no roadmap. There's no blueprint. No one in any level, from the Governor down to the students and faculty in any situation, know how to do this and know the right answer. And so I, as you spoke about students that might be different this year, this semester, I certainly understand the feeling of lowering standards, but I think we can all understand this is a situation that, let's hope, we don't ever have to have again, and extending grace to one another as well as our students is absolutely essential for us to get through this and still have our wits of us at the end, I think. So that concludes my comments, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Dr. Leicher, for your presentation today.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands up, Dr. Leicher. Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Chair.
Yes?
Sorry, I just wanted to say thank you to Dr. Leicher so much. I know just about 10 minutes ago, the CDC declared that Kansas was high-risk red zone. This was just sent out as an alert from the Kansas City Star. And then, of course, I know you probably said it in jest, but I want to make sure we don't spread non-science. I know that there are, the CDC, the World Health, and even Dr. Fuji all support masks. So thank you so much, Dr. Leicher, for your report.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is Johnson County Education Research Triangle. Trustee Cross.
He might be frozen.
Yeah, looks like you're frozen, Lee, and muted. Now you're moving, Lee. You ready to go?
Unmute? It's a challenge. Sorry. I am a son of the 20th century. Mr. Chair, we had no meeting with the Johnson County Education Research Triangle in the past month. Our next meeting will be October 26, 2020, at K-State Alatha. I will note that our revenue, tax revenue that the Triangle collects pursuant to the statute and the operating purpose of the Triangle, we are up 1.6% in May, and we're actually up a half a percent. So, you know, I'm not a big fan of sharing good news just to keep the markets up or spirits up, but that is some good news. There's still money moving and revenue being generated. So, Mr. Chair, we'll meet in October, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. The Research Triangle meets quarterly with the Board, and Trustee Cross is our liaison, and it is funded by a 1/8 cent sales tax. So the fact that they're up both in May and June is a little bit surprising, but it is good news.
It's something.
Yep. I'm going to watch for hands for anybody that wants, has any questions. If not, we'll move on to the Kansas Association of Community College Trustees, K A C C T. Trustee Ingram.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The Kansas Association of Community College Trustees' next meeting is tentatively scheduled at Pratt Community College on Friday and Saturday, August 30 and September 1. We have not decided, determined whether that will be a Zoom meeting or whether we will be in person, but we will make that decision, and I will let everyone know as soon as we make that decision. The K A C C T office has been moved to a smaller office. We are still in the Jayhawk Towers, but as of July 1, we are on the second floor. Following much discussion, consideration, and review, and upon the recommendation of our Executive Director, we have agreed to eliminate the Administrative Assistant position as of August 1. So that is a change to our procedures, but support for office functions will continue to be provided by our laboring firm and our accountant. The Friday legislative phone calls for the community college presidents have continued. K A C C T has been helpful in its guidance and acquisition of information requested during the months of COVID-19. Speaking for our Executive Director, I know Heather has appreciated the response for the numerous requests of information over the past few months from all of our colleges, but certainly that does include Johnson County Community College, so I would thank everyone for that. The Future of Higher Education Council did meet today, as Mr. Carter mentioned. I would add that following the Governor's executive order, there was a K C C T call this morning with the Presidents, and there was a great deal of discussion about that and how it will affect our community college schedule, and that's something that they are talking about. And we did discuss that a little bit further today, brought up some ideas and some concerns that we had on the Council. We also talked about partnerships in education. We were just trying to do a little bit of brainstorming. I think the one theme that Mr. Carter didn't mention that I would like to mention is we did discuss our next steps, as he did mention, but we also talked about the time to degree and the importance of that, and anything that we could put in that category that would assist our students to, you know, start their or complete their degree, no matter where they were in that process, but the importance of that. And I think that's the main thing that I would add at this particular point. Our next meeting, as he mentioned, is August 18, so I will have another report at that time. We really, as he mentioned also, it has not been made clear. I thought initially we were going to be making a presentation to K-Board, or we would give our recommendations to K-Board in, like, the November timeframe, but that was not talked about today. So we'll update you. That's all I have.
I see no questions. Trustee Ingram, you have the Foundation report as well.
I do. The Foundation's Executive Committee met on June 23, and the fiscal year 21 Foundation operating budget was approved. This budget comes exclusively from a portion of the earnings on various foundation funds. The Foundation's operating budget is not supported by and is separate from the college's general fund. In addition to covering certain operational expenses, more than $200,000 will be directed to scholarships, program support, and special campus initiatives at J C C C. That amount is more than half of the overall projected Foundation operating budget for fiscal year 21. These funds will supplement the more than $1.3 million the Foundation also awards in student scholarships. The Foundation welcomed a number of new directors and new members on July 1. Our new directors include Liz Lewis, who's Senior Vice President at Community America Credit Union; Louis Nerman, Managing Partner at Truck Center of America; Ashley Sherard, Vice President at Lenexa Chamber of Commerce. New members included Stan Holm, the President/CEO at Alatha Health, and Robert Brogdon, owner of Robert Brogdon Buick GMC. Lastly, as many of you are now aware, the J C C C Foundation has recently announced it will be transforming and reimagining its annual Some Enchanted Evening Scholarship Gala this year. The difficult decision came after months of discussion with community leaders on the event committee, J C C C administrators, major donors, sponsors, and with Dr. Bound in the weeks leading up to his arrival. Everyone feels this is the right decision, and the Foundation has instead announced its Some Enchanted Opportunity Campaign, which will kick off in August. This multi-month campaign will focus on raising vital funds for student scholarships and student basic needs programs such as our Meal Share and the Student Basic Needs Center. During this time, the Foundation will also be honoring this year's Johnson Countyens of the Year, our community's essential workers. Many details will be sent to mailboxes and inboxes in the next few weeks, and we look forward to recognizing essential workers, seeking inspiration from amazing J C C students, and helping everyone find a way to participate through supporting Some Enchanted Opportunity. And that includes my report.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I see no questions. We'll move into the Committee reports. The first Committee is Learning Quality. Trustee Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Learning Quality Committee met on July 1 at 9:30 via Zoom. Trustees Cross and Laura Smith Everett were in attendance with a plethora of faculty and staff. First, we have four recommendations tonight. The first item, Dr. McLeod gave an update on the working agenda for 2021. That agenda is found on page, the detail of that agenda is found on page 10 of your packet. of that agenda is found on page 10 of your packet. I don't believe there are any substantive changes in the annual yearly activity we do. It is the recommendation of the Learning Quality Committee that the Board of Trustees approve the fiscal year 2020-2021 Learning Quality Committee working agenda, as is shown subsequently in the board packet, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Cook and seconded by Trustee Snyder to approve the Learning Quality Committee working agenda for 2020-2021. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay?
No. Wait, is this the working agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
That motion passes unanimously.
The next item is the modification of the soliciting, canvassing, and promoting-on-campus policy. That's on pages, that detail is found on pages 8 and 9 of your packet. Learning Quality Committee reviewed all of those changes and is making the recommendation to the full board tonight. It is the recommendation of the Learning Quality Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve modification of the Soliciting, Canvassing, and Promoting-on-Campus Policy 318.03, as shown subsequently in the board packet, and I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Is that Trustee Cross?
I think it was Ingram. Or Smith Everett. Smith Everett.
No, Smith Everett. Second.
Trustee Smith Everett seconds Dr. Cook's motion. Is there any discussion? Soliciting and canvassing policy, which the changes are primarily stylistic as I read those. If not, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Yes.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimously.
Next item is the modification of the Sexual Misconduct Policy 650, found on pages 2 and 5 of your packet. The Learning Quality and Human Resources Committee have reviewed the recommended changes to the Sexual Misconduct Policy. This policy review is prompted by the May 2020 release of the new Title IX regulations by the Department of Education, which, if stay in force, become effective on August 14, 2020. The recommended changes modify this policy to address only sexual harassment as defined by Title IX. Change the name to the Sexual Harassment Policy and would only take effect on August 14, 2020, if such effective date of the new Title IX regulations is not stayed. Other sexual misconduct previously addressed by this policy will now be addressed under the Student Harassment, Discrimination, or Retaliation Policy 319.05, or the Employee Harassment, Discrimination, or Retaliation Policy 420, as applicable unless the effective date of the Title IX regulation is stayed. It is the recommendation of the Learning Quality and Human Resources Committees that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to conditionally, conditionally approve modification to the Sexual Misconduct Policy 650, as shown subsequently in the board packet, effective on August 14, 2020. But if the effective date of the new Title IX regulation has stayed before August 14, 2020, no modification to the Student Misconduct Policy 650 will occur, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Cook and seconded by Trustee Snyder to approve the modifications as stated, conditioned upon the effective date of the federal regulations. Discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Trustee Lawson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a couple general concerns. These are massive rule changes, and I don't know how any college can really implement them do under COVID right now, or during it, excuse me. But also, I believe it could violate verbal rights of students. The way I'm hearing, our college interpret the process, after I've talked to our president, would be to hire a third-party law firm to be the hearing officer for both sides. I think that is a wise move to remove any of the conflicts of interest of inadvertently for internal staff, faculty, or board members, as we work together. Reporting should not have any pressures of personal feelings to not report because you know someone, or the opposite, to harm someone for a personal agenda. So, I think this puts the process of deciding law into the correct scope of practitioners that run our judicial system and trustees in the scope of practice of writing policy. I think the staff is already working grueling amount of time right now through all the changes that we're having to go through COVID. I know I can count on them on being able to implement these policies if we have to go through this under duress, but this should not happen. I would like to make a motion, Mr. Board, that we draft a letter to the Department of Education noting the risk, the concerns, and the burden this places on our staff and student rights during a time of pandemic.
Well, a motion would have to be to amend the motion on the floor. Can you hold that motion until after we vote on the current motion?
Can I make a motion to amend the motion that we have, or procedurally, that's the best way? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I think if you move to amend it by adding that requirement, then that would somehow be in our misconduct policy. I would prefer if we just pass the changes conditionally, and then you can make your motion and explain the purpose of the letter as a separate motion. Would be my suggestion.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Any other discussion on these policies? And I guess I would add that these are requirements that we, if we do not meet the federal regulations, whether we like them or not, we lose, we risk losing our federal funding, whether it's for Pell Grants or anything else. So, it is the hammer that the federal government holds over any higher education institution, and probably K-12 for that matter, with respect to funding. So, that's the reason these changes are being made, and the reason they're being made conditionally is because the regulations are under attack legally in lawsuits across the country, and we don't know what will happen before August 14. So, if nobody else has any discussion, all those in favor of the motion, was that, did that just cover the recommendation on page 2 of the board packet?
Yeah, there's two different motions. That's the first one. We'll have a second one coming up.
Okay. All in favor of the motion to conditionally approve modification of the Sexual Misconduct Policy 650.00, on page, begins on page 2 of the board packet, signify by saying, I'm going to go with yes. It's a little easier to hear, yes. Say yes, if you want to.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Those opposed, no? That motion carries unanimously. Trustee Lawson, could we do the set next policy, and maybe, it might be even better, because we have one in the HR agenda, that we talk about a letter after all three of the policy changes?
If that feels appropriate, Mr. Chair, that's fine.
Okay, all right. I think that way we cover all three policy changes, and then you can talk about what you'd like to do. Dr. Cook, the second recommendation?
The second recommendation is found on pages 6 through 8, and it deals with a modification of the Student Discrimination, Harassment Policy, under the same terms as we just voted on the previous one, dealing with the rules by Title IX. If the, and I'll just read the recommendation, it's very similar. It is the recommendation of the Learning Quality Committee that the Board of Trustees accepts the recommendation of the college administration to conditionally approve modification to the Student Discrimination, Harassment, or Retaliation Policy 319.05, as shown subsequently in the board packet, effective on August 14, 2020. But if the effective date of the new Title IX regulation has stayed before August 14, 2020, no modification to the Student Discrimination, Harassment, or Retaliation Policy 319.05 will occur, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Been moved by Dr. Cook and seconded by Trustee Snyder. Same situation, required by, required to comply with federal regulations. Is there any discussion on this motion?
Mr. Chair.
Trustee Smith Everett.
Yeah, I just wanted to make clear what my understanding was, and if Colleen is on the call, she will say this much better than I will and my rudimentary understanding. But essentially, what the Department of Ed did was boxed us in with certain terminology about sexual harassment, and the fear from people that spoke last month at our board meeting, as well as has been widely publicized all over the place, is that we have students' rights that are being harmed, and that we also have a bunch of other categories that teeter on harassment and can become later sexual harassment, but don't necessarily meet that criteria initially. And I just wanted to applaud the staff in what they are, what they've done for us here with these two policies is they've kept within the bounds of the Department of Ed requirements, but this particular policy allows us to have a little broader stroke, and we are able to include some of the other protections that we originally had in our policies that go in the long list of intimidation and harassment that can then lead to sexual harassment. And I just wanted to say that in a public meeting, so that anyone watching understands that we are listening and that we have put those protections in with this particular policy we're voting on right now.
I think it's safe to say, nobody on the board wants or anticipates any different treatment other than the nondiscrimination, non-harassment, non-misconduct policies that we've tried to implement. So, I appreciate that comment, Dr., or Trustee Smith Everett. I gave you a promotion or a demotion, I'm not sure.
I'll go with Dr. Smith Everett from now on.
Okay. Any further discussion on the recommendation on Policy 319.05 to be conditionally approved, depending upon the regulations becoming effective August 14, 2020?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do believe the Department of Education boxed us in on this one. I don't see us giving us a choice at all, and I, too, applaud the staff. I still hope we can make a statement saying that we can agree with the 18 states and the numerous colleges suing at this moment. I know the boards are wanting the best, and I appreciate that, but I just wanted to make sure that we know that this is definitely feels under duress.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying yes.
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 Aye.
Trustee Cross, you're just a rebel.
Before I leave...
I'm not done yet. All opposed, say nay. Just want to make sure we have a record that it's a unanimous vote.
Before I leave the recommendations, I do believe Trustee Lawson makes an excellent point on a letter of communication, and if that is a motion still being considered, I would second that motion. My, my question would be to Trustee Lawson, who, what would be your intent of who should draft that letter? Should it be from the chairman of the Board of our trustees? Should it be from staff? What were you thinking?
My, if I might, my, my goal was to get through all three policy changes and then discuss Trustee Lawson's letter, let her put a motion on the table at that point.
We have finished our poll.
We are not done with HR, which addresses the same issue.
Yeah, I thought it was the same issue.
No. We had, we had three of these modifications.
I concur with Trustee Cook. I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, but I just want to say I concur with Trustee Cook.
I, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to eliminate it. I'm trying to put it after all three modifications are done.
I'm talking, I'm talking to you.
We'll, we'll defer till you want to bring it up, Mr. Chair.
Oh, it's that stain on your shirt there, Trustee Cross, the, that funny-looking bird.
Mr. Chair, back to the business of the, of the, of the committee. The, there were three other things. Dr. Weber gave an update on where we were with campus safety measures, the COVID report. I mean, we heard a lot of that at our retreat Tuesday. Ms. Martley gave an update on continuing education, and I would say again that the SBDC office and our continuing ed has really done yeoman's work. There have been several requests of businesses during this COVID time, whether it be for unemployment issues, whether it be for labor issues, whether it be for operational issues. And Karen, I just want you to know that I really appreciate what you and your folks have been doing, helping all of our small business folks. Dr. McLeod gave an update on the summer reach-out plans currently underway. Again, or the work that he gave at our retreat on Tuesday, very detailed, and I appreciate Dr. Leicher's comments about input from all people, and at the same time, the great work that our, that our staff and administration and cabinet are doing. These are unprecedented times, and we all are searching to make the right decision. I appreciated your comments, Dr. Laura Smith Everett, on, on keeping our composure during this time and not getting too emotionally out of, out of whack. Anyway, that concludes my report. Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Cook. Trustee Cross, this is for you. I'm smiling as I talk to you, right? All right. Well, we wanted the Human Resources Committee, Trustee Ingram.
Thank you. The Human Resources Committee met on Friday, July 10. You will find the information regarding that in our board packet on pages 11 through 14. Ms. Colleen Chandler, Director of Human Resources, provided a review and update on the recommended, recommended changes to the Sexual Misconduct Policy 650 and the Employee Harassment, Discrimination, or Retaliation Policy 420. This policy review was prompted by the May 2020 release of the new Title IX regulations by the Department of Education, which become effective on August 14, 2020. The recommended changes modify this policy 650 to address only sexual harassment as defined by Title IX, change the name on Sexual Harassment Policy, and would only take effect on August 14, 2020, if such effective date of the new Title IX regulations is not stayed. Other sexual misconduct previously addressed by this policy will now be addressed under the Student Harassment, Discrimination, or Retaliation Policy 319.05, or the Employee Harassment, Discrimination, or Retaliation Policy 420, as applicable unless the effective date of the Discrimination, Retaliation Policy 420, excuse me, unless the effective date of the Title IX regulations is stayed. The Learning Quality Committee will bring forward the changes to the Sexual Misconduct Policy, and that has already been done at this meeting. The Human Resources Committee has reviewed the recommended changes to the Employee Discrimination, Harassment, or Retaliation Policy 420. This policy review was prompted, again, by the release of the new Title IX regulations by the Department of Education, which became effective on August 14, 2020. The recommended changes modify the scope of this policy to include sexual misconduct that is not sexual harassment as defined by Title IX, and would only take effect on August 14, 2020, if such effective date of the new Title IX regulations is not stayed. I hope everyone had a chance to review the summary of the proposed material changes. That was something that was included, and actually requested by Dr. Leicher in our meeting, and it gives a nice summary, and we asked to be included in that as well. So, all of the trustees do have a copy of that, and I understand it will be shared with Faculty Association. We do have the recommendation, and I will read it. It is the recommendation of the Human Resources Committee that the Board of Trustees accepts the recommendation of the college administration to conditionally approve modification to the Employee Discrimination, Harassment, or Retaliation Policy 420, as shown subsequently in the board packet, effective on August 14, 2020. But if the effective date of the new Title IX regulations has stayed before August 14, 2020, no modifications to the Employee Discrimination, Harassment, or Retaliation Policy 420 will occur, and I will make that motion.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Ingram, seconded by Trustee Smith Everett to accept the recommendation. The modifications of Policy 420.00 that starts at page 11 of our board packet, is there discussion on this modification? The reason this was in the Human Resources Committee was because it deals with employees. The other two modifications dealt with students, and that's why they were in the Learning Quality Committee. Is that my understanding correct? Okay. Discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, say yes.
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 Opposed, nay? That motion carries unanimously. Trust, do you have more report before we go to Trustee Lawson?
I do. I can do that however you want. The meeting continued. As Ms. Becky Seltzer, Vice President, Human Resources, gave an update on the committee, Jerry Zimmerman, Manager of Benefits, will be heading up discussing paid holidays and leaves. The committee will consist of candidates from the Academic Branch Council, the Calendar Committee, hourly staff, and salaried staff. Ms. Chandler reviewed the exit interviews for employees who separated in CY 20, first quarter, and the stay interviews for the employees hired in calendar year 19, quarter two. Dr. Randy Weber, Interim Executive Vice President, Finance and Administration, Vice President, Student Success and Engagement, gave a return-to-campus update. On our website, we have placed a public case tracker, so individuals can see the number of cases associated with JCCC and their status. Due to the governor's order, masks are required in all places for everyone indoors, except for your private workspace, and when you are not meeting someone else. We are in the process of changing our guidelines, starting expectations, starting expectations for the classrooms, public settings, indoor, outdoor, as well as work areas. The next Human Resources Committee meeting is scheduled for Friday, August 7, at 8:00 a.m., location to be determined, and that concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you. While we're still in the Human Resources Committee, Trustee Lawson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, for me, the reason I wanted to be able to make that motion, and I appreciate the extra time so that we can really think about this, was to stand in the support of the 18 states and the other colleges, just by noting that the difficulty that this causes for what the Department of Education is asking... Department of Education is asking us to do is, at minimum, a delay. I think there needs to be more understanding of the FERPA violations, the implementation, the training, some of the things that I've mentioned prior, just to be able to make sure that we can indeed provide a safe and accountable due process. So, with that, my motion, I motion that the Board draft a letter to the Department of Education, noting the risks, the concerns, and burden this places on our staff and student rights during a pandemic time.
And again, I will second that motion.
Motion made by trustee Lawson, seconded by trustee Cook, to draft a letter on behalf of the Board to the Department of Education, expressing the concerns outlined by trustee Lawson. I would add to that, I mean, we talk a lot about local control. We had a pretty good system. I think it worked well. I think we addressed issues that we needed to address, and now we are kind of having to turn it upside down. So, any other comments in the room? I think what we would need to do is, I would work with Dr. Bound to get a draft out to the trustees. It's always difficult to draft in a committee setting and have seven people, so we'll get back to the grace part that trustee Smith Everett told us. We'll get a draft out, maybe first of next week, and see if we can get a quick agreement on language. Any otherbody else on the motion? If not, all in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed, no? That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Ingram. Management Committee, trustee Cook.
Management Committee met on July 1 at 8:00 a.m., and being the chair of that committee, I had technical difficulties getting on in a timely fashion. I would say that all of those technical difficulties were self-inflicted, and the staff was trying diligently to get me on, and I finally got on, but I had the wrong numbers I was using as a code, and I'm just not very efficient. So, with that in mind, Paul Snyder, trustee Snyder ran the meeting and did a great job, so I'll defer to you, trustee Snyder, to give the report.
Thank you, Dr. Cook. As Dr. Cook mentioned, the Management Committee held its meeting at 8:00 a.m. on Wednesday, July 1. The information related to the meeting can be found in the packet on pages 15 through 33. The Committee received several reports from committees. The first one was from Tom Clayton, Director of Insurance and Risk Management, presented his semi-annual property and liability insurance program. I would like to note that Tom is or has retired. I'm not sure if he's actually out the door yet, but if he's not, he's retiring soon, and just want to note that he's had a long and very successful career here at the community college, and we wish him well. Randy Weber, interim Executive Vice President of Finance and Administrative Services, presented information on several agreements with BNSF, including an amendment to the educational operating contracts and an agreement for an amendment to this statement of work. That information can be found on the consent agenda on pages 72 and 73 of the board packet. Rachel Leers, Chief Financial Officer, gave an update on the county's assessed valuation for a final determination on the college's ad valorem tax revenue. Janelle Vogler, Associate Vice President of Business Services, presented the single-source purchase report and contract renewal report, which can be found on page 26, and she also gave a summary of the awarded bids between $50,000 and $150,000, and that summary can be found on page 27. Tom Hall, Associate Vice President of Campus Services, presented an overview of the Capital Infrastructure Inventory and Replacement Plan. It's a very comprehensive report that details everything that needs to be done from a maintenance perspective on campus. He also gave a monthly update on capital infrastructure projects, and that report is on page 29 and 30 of the packet. And Mr. Hall also reviewed the report on the financial status of the master plan projects, and that is also in your packet on page 31. Tom Pagano, Vice President of Information Services, provided a quarterly update on projects in the IS department. Clearly, his team has taken a key role in COVID responses, and the efforts are appreciated. I have four recommendations for tonight. The first one relates to safety and security policy. It is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accepts the recommendation of the college administration to approve modification of the Safety and Security Policy 610.00, and I'll make that motion.
Moved by trustee Snyder, seconded by trustee Cook, to approve the recommendations, recommended modifications to the Safety and Security Policy 610.00 at page 15 of the board packet. Does anybody have any questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, say yes?
Yes.
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 Opposed, no? That motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just note that these policy updates are relatively routine in nature and deal with parking and personal transportation policies. The next one is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve modification to the National Incident Management System Policy 620.00, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second.
Moved by trustee Snyder, and just under the bell, seconded by trustee Ingram, to approve the recommendation to modify the National Incident Management System Policy 620.00 on page 17 of the board packet. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? That motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. I have a third policy update. It is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve modification of the Parking and Personal Transportation Policy 640.00, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Moved by trustee Snyder, seconded by trustee Smith Everett, to approve the recommendations of changes to the Parking and Personal Transportation Policy 640.00, as shown, starting on page 18 of the board packet. Are there any questions or any discussion? If not, all in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? That motion carries unanimously.
Finally, on the budget, Rachel Leers presented a recommendation related to the college's fiscal year 2020 over to 2021 budget. The Notice of Public Hearing is on page 24 of the board packet and states that the Board will hold its public hearing on the budget in August. And to support that, there is a motion. It is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to authorize the publication of the Notice of Public Hearing Form for the 2020-2021 budget, subject to the adjustment as actual expenditure figures are available. Furthermore, it is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to authorize the publication of the Notice of Vote for the 2020-2021 budget at a later date, and I'll make that motion.
Second. Moved by trustee Snyder and seconded by trustee Cook, to authorize the publication of the budget information for the Notice of Public Hearing, which will be held on August 20 at our next board meeting. We have to adopt a budget in August. The final mail levy is then set in October or early November, and tax bills go out in November. So, this is a public hearing that will be held on August 20. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, say yes?
Yes.
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 Opposed, no? That motion also carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes the Management Committee report, unless Dr. Cook or trustee Smith Everett have anything to add.
Hearing none, we will move to the ad hoc committees, starting first with the Presidential Transition Team, trustee Cook and trustee Smith Everett. You got him here, so congratulations.
Let me start, and trustee Smith Everett can fill in all the gaps I missed. We actually had two parts to the transition. One was the transitioning of Dr. Sobchak leading the campus, and I didn't bring it up during the foundation, but I want to acknowledge again, former trustee John Stewart and his committee led a campaign to raise funds for the Jill and Stacey Sobchak endowed scholarship. And the last number I heard was that amount is now over $50,000, and so they will be establishing the criteria for the kinds of scholarships that will be given to students, but several students will benefit for that effort over a period of time. Regarding Dr. Bound, one of the key parts of the transition plan was the discussion and alignment of COVID-19 strategies. And again, we've talked about it a lot tonight. We've talked a lot about it at our retreat Tuesday past. And Dr. Liker, it's always good to hear a reference to how we're doing compared to other organizations, even though we still have things to improve upon here, but I really want to commend everyone on this campus and beyond who have been working diligently to do what we can to ensure safety for students, faculty, staff, visitors, even safety of trustees. This is incredible, the amount of plexiglass you see around the campus. So, we're pleased that we made a key part of that transition plan, details about COVID-19, and it really has taken a lot of time and effort by people to make sure that this campus is safe for all who enter here. Dr. Bound has been very actively working his 90-day plan, and he can speak to that himself later, but I really want to thank trustee Smith Everett, who really did yeoman's work on the transition as well. So, Laura, I'll turn it over to you, and you can pick up the pieces.
No pieces to pick up, and I thought I was being referred to as Dr. Smith Everett from now on, so I'm disappointed everyone's gone back to trustee Smith Everett. Thank you very much, trustee Cook. I don't have anything further. You summed it up very nicely. Thank you. I want to welcome Dr. Bound. Sorry that I could not be there in person to do so, but we are really glad to have you, and of all the times to be making a transition, and nothing like a global pandemic to usher you into JCCC, but I think you'll see, as Dr. Cook spoke of, the tremendous amount of work that our staff has done and always does that makes us very proud. So, welcome, and we look forward to walking with you down this path and looking forward to some new directions for JCCC that we maybe have never even imagined before.
All right, thank you. The Board Self-Assessment Ad Hoc Committee, trustee Ingram and trustee Cross.
Yes, I do have that report, but I will count on trustee Cross to add something if he would be interested in doing that at the end. The Self-Assessment Team Committee is prepared to move forward with its recommendation to provide a board self-assessment and individual board member assessment as coordinated by ACCT. Following communication with ACCT and further discussion, it is our recommendation that the two be combined, seeking both personal reflection on our individual performance and that of the board. We anticipate the cost to be approximately $3,000. We have not signed a contract. We have seen a proposal, but we have not moved forward with that, but we will address that, I'm sure, in a little bit. We support the interest of President Bound and Chair Musial in coordinating the evaluation with an upcoming retreat to focus on our shared goal of serving as a high-functioning, high-performance board. With that in mind, we continue to discuss this collaboration. We'll provide details as they are confirmed. We recently received information from ACCT regarding a first-ever virtual event. You all should have a flyer at your desk that I would encourage you to take a look at. The Governance Institute, Leadership Institute, provides new trustees with a far greater understanding of board members' fiduciary governance and advocacy roles and responsibilities, as well as a look at how the community college sector is likely to change as a result of recent events. They also share this is a great refresher for seasoned trustees as well as presidents. The ACCT four-day governance seminar will be held August 3 through 6, from 10 a.m. to 11:15 a.m., and I think, again, the information is self-explanatory on the handout. We would encourage all trustees to attend. There are two different options that you can read about. Anyone who can attend and participate should let Teri Schlitz know by July 29, so she can register you, and will provide the access information to you. And I believe, trustee Cross, do you have anything to add to that report?
No, I think you did fine. I fully support this effort, and I'm glad that Chair Musial and President Bound have encouraged it, because in the law, we have continuing legal education, as Chair Musial will talk about, and I think it's good for all of us to continually and perpetually learn how to do our jobs and adapt in this world. So, thank you, Madam trustee.
Not a problem. The two options that we do have, we have an on-demand and an in-person participation, so they'll read about that and be able to determine which is better for them.
And if you'll let Teri know, she will take care of paying the registration fee. It is an opportunity to get training that would normally require us to take two or three days of time, three or four personal days to travel. This was going to be held in Phoenix, I believe, when it was still live, and it would increase the cost of the college dramatically. We encourage professional development of trustees. This is an opportunity to do it at a low cost and really a low interruption time for those of us who are still working, because it's an hour and 15 minutes out of a day, four days in a row. So, we are encouraging trustees to do that.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, trustee Lawson?
Could we?
Oh, trustee Smith Everett. Dr. Smith Everett, honorary doctorate.
Could we get that?
Yeah.
I think it was just sent. Wow, Caitlin Murphy is amazing, and I... That is the end of my statements. Thank you.
That was Teri. She's over here typing as we were talking, so. Oh, it was Caitlin?
She had it ready to go.
Magic.
All right.
Magic, magic.
You should see us deliver sandwiches. We were really fast. All right. The next item on the agenda is the Treasurers Report.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Yeah, I just had a question about management. I think, I didn't realize it was going to move so fast. Can I just have a concern on page 26 of the management packet that I wanted to ask about? I know we are not voting on that contract, but I noticed that it is the Vertiv Paper Company that's getting renewed again, and I checked on the Human Rights Campaign, and it still has a rating of 20 out of 100. And last year, I raised this question of why not switch the companies to stay in line with our non-discrimination policy? And when I reviewed the transcripts, it looks that the response was that the Board agreed and voted at the time to renew with the understanding that staff would revise... Or, I'm sorry, review our procurement policy. And so, I have not seen anything since in our board transcripts that give the public or me the information as to when that procurement review happened. And so, I know last year, this company was informed that they had a low ranking on the Human Rights Campaign list and was due to some paperwork error, that's what we were told, and the failure to fill out a questionnaire. I know it's a year later, and I'm sure they've had time to fix that paperwork. So, I'm curious, Mr. Chair, if there's any way to make a motion to have a contingency on this contract, that Vertiv provide us with the documentation of their response to Human Rights Campaign survey, and those answers must be accepted by the president?
You can make a motion. We're in the same situation we were last year, in that we need fine paper products starting on August 1, when we renew this contract. We have no idea if the second-place bidder, Midland Paper Company, which also has no rating from the Human Rights Campaign, is even available to do it, or willing to stand by its bid. I have personally reviewed Veritiv's EEOC statement, and it is at least as strong as that of the Johnson County Community College non-discrimination statement. The chairman of the company is a woman who was the Georgia CEO of the Year in 2018. They have on the board a woman who is the head of Atlanta's Growth and Inclusion Committee. I think we've done everything we need to do to ensure that this company is compliant with all state and federal laws, and so I would recommend we simply approve the bid as we did before.
So, I don't think we have a vote on it. I think it's under a certain amount that is under the discretion of the president, so it's more of a contingency that we get that documentation that you have seen, to be able to see that for ourselves.
Well, it's available publicly. I don't think we're going... It would take a motion to make this bid contingent. The president, the authority has been given to the administration for bids of this size. So, unless somebody makes a motion to make it conditioned on something at the risk of us not having paper on campus, then the president will continue to renew this bid under the contract we have with Veritiv. under the contract we have with Veritiv. Trustee Ingram?
Well, I just, I just am thinking about this. I was on management last year as chair, and if my memory serves me correctly, we did not gather much interest in the pursuit of any changes to our policy. So I do remember Dr. Larson bringing that up and seeking information from procurement on best practices among our peer institutions. I'm not sure how that moved forward, but her comments about the Human Rights Campaign, again, if I remember correctly, was that their corporate index was based on relatively large corporations, and we do about 3,000 requests a year, 3,000 purchase orders a year, and most of the people that we've worked with are much smaller. And so that just seemed to be the reason for that not moving forward.
The Management Committee did take into consideration the discussion we had last July.
As I remember, yes, yes, yes. Following the meeting, I believe.
We ready to move on?
So, Mr. Chair, then I would make a motion to add a contingency to this contract, that Vertiv provide us with the documentation of their response to Human Rights Campaign survey, and those answers must be accepted by the president.
Let me clarify the motion. Kelsey, do we need to add this as an agenda item? The contract is on the, is on the agenda. So if there's some condition added to the contract, do we need to have a motion to add it to the agenda, or can we just address the motion? Well, let's see where the motion goes, I guess. I want to make sure I'm clear again on the motion before I ask if anybody wants to second it. You want documentation from Veritiv as to whether or not it responded to the Human Rights Campaign survey, and then the answers would be provided to Dr. Bowden?
Mr. Chair, last year, the reason that was given to us for their 20 out of 100 rating was because they didn't turn in a survey. So it's been a year later. They are, they know that they can turn the survey, and there's actually several attempts that the Human Rights Campaign provides and contacts and reaches out before they give this rating. And I would like to, if they want this contract, I want to add a contingency that they provide us with that documentation, that, to the response that they've had to the survey, to us, and Dr. Bowden reviews that, and with his acceptance to those answers, they receive this contract.
And I'm assuming, then, that if we do that for one vendor, we have to do that for every vendor of the college? And your suggestion is if they haven't submitted a questionnaire, answered, or answers their questionnaire to a third-party evaluating company, that the president should deny them?
Mr. Chair, I'm only speaking about this one, and so my motion is specific to this contract.
I know. I'm talking about a policy matter. We can't arbitrarily discriminate against vendors either in our procurement policy, so I want to make sure that everybody is clear on that with respect to this company. Did you do any more investigation of this company since last July to determine their EEOC policies, their community work, their board member representation, or anything else that would be of interest to the Human Rights Campaign?
Mr. Chair, I would just like to make that motion, so if there is a second, we can move on from there.
Does anybody want to second the motion? Motion dies for lack of a second. We'll move on to the Treasurers Report. Trustee Cross?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The Treasurers Report can be found in the packet, and the board packet includes the Treasurers Report, excuse me. Some items of note include, on page one is the General Post-Secondary Technical Education Fund Summary. May was the 11th month of the college's 2019-20 fiscal year. Also in May, the college made scheduled payments on the Series 2012, 2015, and 2019 revenue bonds. The payments totaled $190,786 and are included in the Plant Funds section of the Treasurers Report. An ad-volum tax distribution of $42.4 million was received from Johnson County in June and will be included in next month's report. The college's unencumbered cash balance as of May 31, 2020, in all funds was $84.5 million, which is approximately $2.7 million lower than at the same time last year. Consequently, expenditures in the primary operating funds are within the approved budgetary limits. I thank Vice President Learz for her preparation of this report and all the work that she and our staff does. So it is, therefore, Mr. Chair, the recommendation of the college administration that the Board of Trustees approve the Treasurers Report for the month ended May 31, 2020, subject to audit. And I would so much.
And moved by Trustee Cross, seconded by Trustee Snyder, to approve the Treasurers Report subject to August for month end, May 31, 2020. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, say yes.
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 Aye.
Opposed, no? Treasurers Report is accepted unanimously. Dr. Bowden, your first monthly report to the board. All right. Chairman Musil, trustees, for those in attendance in the room and those in attendance on Zoom, thank you for your commitment to Johnson County Community College. And trustees, thank you for entrusting me to lead this fine institution. It is a privilege and an honor to serve here and to be a part of this great family. Our faculty and staff across the college are dedicated to serving our students and being an excellent college. It's no secret that we have tremendous facilities, and when you blend that together with our dedicated faculty and staff, JCCC is poised to set the standard for what it means to be an excellent community college. For the past two weeks, I've spent much of my time getting to know people, from the cabinet to some of our faculty and staff, to finding out just how good our dining services team is. And I got to tell you, Cav Express is an amazing, an amazing service, and the food is absolutely fantastic. I've spent time getting tours of our programs and facilities, and particularly draw attention to WCMT and the Academic Resource Center. I've been meeting with donors and friends of the college. Today, we met with the BNSF Railway Team and learning about the National Academy of Railroad Science. I've been having meetings with you as trustees, and one of the highlights for me, frankly, was a recommendation from trustee, also known as Dr. Smith Everett, of the Johnson County Libraries Race Project, Kansas City, and the Auto Tour on Redlining. If you haven't had the opportunity to participate in that, I just encourage you to take a tour and have a tremendous history lesson. In my conversations earlier this week with our cabinet, I started laying out some of my approaches to leadership and my desires for us as a college, focusing heavily on how we collaborate, how we listen, how we evaluate, and how we move forward together. And specifically to that end, asking that we do a mid, kind of mid-cycle review from when we entered step three of our Return to Campus Plan and where we are today. And so each of our members of cabinet are going back to their branches, are going back to their team. Again, I didn't tell them how to do it, but the request was, please go back and with your teams, understand what's working and what's not working as well as we'd like. To listen to them and then allow for the opportunity to adjust our protocols so that as, as we are serving students, as we're serving each other, that we're adjusting based on what's working and what's not working as we move forward, realizing that the, the level of activity on campus has ramped up in July. Primary consideration being given to the teach-out, and secondly, to serving students who are entering for the first time or returning after some time away and may need the additional face-to-face service. But again, looking to our teams to help guide how we do that and how we do that well. In addition, during this time, I had the opportunity to meet with Dr. Leicher. Appreciate you being here tonight. I appreciate your time the other day. We've had one meeting so far. I look forward to many more over the weeks and months and years ahead, and I look forward to meeting with Dr. Leicher, Dr. Harvey, and the leadership of the Faculty Association in the near future, to begin to develop that relationship together, as together we seek to serve our students and our colleagues well. Honestly, we're doing our best. Teri and Caitlin are working like crazy to try and keep me on task with our 90-day plan. It's an aggressive plan, but we are working to stay true to that plan out of the gate. These 90 days are about listening, but I would tell you that the relationship goes beyond the 90 days. If I listen for 90 days and cut it off after that, we're going to have real problems. I know I'm going to have real problems. And so during this time and beyond, it's about listening and discerning together with our colleagues what's best for this college and best for the students and communities we serve, and where the strengths are and where the opportunities lie. We will soon need to begin the strategic planning process, and as I said during the interview process, I am committed to engaging at least 50% of our full-time faculty and staff, and also to invite our part-time staff and adjunct faculty who want to participate in the process, to invite them into that as well. But to me, it's also about including our community, those outside the college, those within the college. Certainly, I don't want you to hear that it doesn't include all of you and our foundation as well, but it's really, as we do that and as we go external, to invite community into this process, to listen to our community and business leaders and to our thought leaders about how we move forward as Johnson County Community College. And John Clayton and I meet, actually, tomorrow morning to begin to lay out that process. So more to come. I'd also say that Bruce Hartman has been doing a fantastic job of keeping me aware of the work going on that he leads. And so while we haven't had a chance to meet face-to-face yet, he's been keeping me informed about, especially about the fundraising event coming up this fall, Beyond Bounds. And earlier this week, he informed me that, to date, we have, I think, 120 pieces available for the auction, and there are 189 artists involved, so he believes we have 69 more pieces coming that will provide a temporary, multi-month exhibition when the museum is ready to reopen. And then at its conclusion, that will turn into a fundraising online auction with proceeds going to the museum, including art education and installations of work, work of art throughout campus and new acquisitions. You know, in these first couple of weeks, I've had a tremendous opportunity to meet some amazing people. And this afternoon, it's my privilege to introduce you to one of our team members. As trustees, you've heard about our work, and we started talking about it from the very beginning, from the public comment this evening, and in ongoing communication by email and so forth with you. Tara Karaim is the Coordinator of Community-Based Learning, and in her role, she serves as a staff advisor to at least three student organizations, the Honors Student Association, Phi Theta Kappa, and more closely aligned to our discussion tonight, the Political Engagement and Leadership Alliance. As such, she is actively engaged with the group Crush the Vote. Tara's been with the college for approximately three years. She has a Master's of Art from UMKC. She's a talented painter. She showed me one of, actually, I spied with my little eyes in her office, a piece of her own work. But she's also providing guidance to budding artists, AKA her nephews, who is proudly, and she's proudly displaying the works in her office as well. Trustees and guests, I'd like to introduce you to Tara Karaim, who's going to provide you with an update on JCCC's Crush the Vote activities. Tara?
Hello?
There you are.
Can you hear me?
We've got you.
I said I'm blushing because that was such a great introduction. Hi, everyone, President Bowden and Board of Trustees. First of all, I'd like to express my gratitude in being able to speak to you all today. Thank you for giving me a few minutes of your time to hear about something that's very important to me. As Dr. Bowden said, my name's Tara Karaim, and I'm the Community-Based Learning Coordinator here at JCCC. In addition to advising three clubs, I coordinate learning opportunities that benefit our community and promote civic engagement in our students. I also lead our Crush the Vote effort. Crush the Vote is a collaborative team formed by staff from Honors and Community-Based Learning, Student Life and Marketing, faculty from Political Science and Communication Studies, students from Honors, Phi Theta Kappa, Student Senate, and the Political Engagement and Leadership Alliance, JCCC trustees, Musil and Lawson, and nonprofits such as the All-in-Campus Democracy Challenge, Loudlight, and the League of Women Voters. This is a nonpartisan effort to increase electoral engagement among our student body. Our goals include voter education, number one. We'd like to educate and reach at least 9,000 students on the importance of voter registration and voting, the importance of democratic citizenship, the logistics of the electoral process, and the specifics of election issues, through in-person events and virtual methods by Election Day. Our second goal is voter turnout. With a more educated student population, we aim to increase voter registration rate to 95% and our voting rate to 70%. For the 2018 and 2020 elections, I have applied for and received grants of $1,000 each election cycle from our, from outside organizations to support this group's work. In 2018, we received a gold seal from the All-in-Campus Democracy Challenge for reaching a 45.5% voting rate. That's on a midterm election, mind you. So far this year, we've worked very hard to plan a virtual summer challenge and virtual fall events to engage students with the elections, such as a virtual debate watch and a virtual National Voter Registration Day celebration. I'm very impressed with our students in Honors, Phi Theta Kappa, Student Senate, Pella, or the Political Engagement and Leadership Alliance, whom have taught us and inspired us as passionate citizens that want to get their peers to the polls. Despite our hard work, we, as a group, are limited in our reach. Every member of our collaborative team has their own regular responsibilities as faculty, staff, and students, but have taken on involvement with Crush the Vote as service to the college. We are an ad-hoc committee formed out of our common passion for civic engagement rather than a formalized group appointed by JCCC. One of our challenges is trying to balance the passion and energy that we have with the realities of a college campus and less-than-infinite resources. So, we wanted to introduce ourselves to the board today in hopes of working together in the future. It is certainly possible that we will be back at some point, asking for additional resources and support from administration in order to reach our goals this year and in election years to come. We're working hard, but at some point, we'll need additional staff and student workers dedicated solely to civic and electoral engagement. Administration could also help us to reach all students about important voter registration and voting deadlines. That may include policy changes that make voter registration and voting more accessible at JCCC. All these actions could go a long way to creating a culture of civic engagement and fulfilling the institutional learning outcome of social responsibility. And we believe it would support JCCC's mission of inspiring learning to transform lives and strengthen communities. If we expect students to actively strengthen their communities, it seems like we should also work to educate them on their most basic civic right and responsibility. Thank you so much for your time. As educators and elected officials, I know that you all understand the power and importance of democracy, and if And if given the chance, would want to do everything possible to instill this in our future leaders here at JCCC.
Tara, thank you so much. Appreciate you providing an update and appreciate the work that you and so many others are leading, are passionate about, and I look forward to joining you in that effort.
Thank you, Tara.
So just as I wrap up my first report, a couple of things that I want to do as I close. So trustees at your places around the table, and we'll see to the trustees who aren't able to be with us tonight. We'll get you a copy of this. This is the commencement program from 2020. And I know that the year ended so much differently than anybody had hoped for. But as you look through this, you can see the students who have earned a credential during this past year. And I guess I would say thank you to our faculty, staff, and students for, or excuse me, our faculty and staff for the guidance, the great work you've done together with our students so that they can earn a meaningful credential. And to our students who have graduated this past year, congratulations. And then finally, in closing, I want to say thank you to the team here. You have made me feel so welcome in these early days. I look forward to working with you. I look forward to serving you as your president. And with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Bound. We look forward to it as well and for many, many years to come. I noticed you said many years to come for Dr. Leicher. He may be already running for reelection for all we know. All right, we'll move on to new business.
Mr. Chair, can I make a comment?
Sure, Trustee Lawson.
Thank you. I just wanted to welcome our new president. Thank you so much for the great report. And I know you have hit the ground running and you have been very prepared and diligent about the things and priorities that we need to address. So I appreciate that. And thank you so much, Tara, for your report. That was fantastic and outstanding. I know I have concerns about our civic engagement, especially central, our staff and faculty don't get paid to run that committee. So it's definitely a voluntary position, and I appreciate all the time and resources available. I have had a time to talk to Dr. Bound and others about that Crush the Vote Committee and some of the concerns that were brought up with Tara, Tara, excuse me. And we don't have to manage the details to achieve success for the Crush the Vote Committee. Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion that the board give the president oversight of the $1,000 requested to help them in their voter registration efforts and set a target floor of 55% voter engagement and hear those update reports in the president's report.
Once again, we would have to have a motion to add that to the agenda. We have a committee structure. If we're talking about student engagement, I would suggest we make that recommendation to the Learning Quality Committee and use that process to determine it, particularly when it's going to include an expenditure that nobody knew about until today. So I would, I would request that you withdraw that and that we refer it to the Learning Quality Committee as we would normally with other requests. If you want to.
Chair, I can withdraw that motion and make sure that it goes through the Learning Quality Committee. Thank you.
Okay. Trustee Cook, is that your committee?
It is.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. All right, we'll move on to the new business. The item of new business on the agenda is the report and recommendation from the Facility's Naming Committee. As you'll recall, we identified that committee and that that committee would be named in, I think that was at our April meeting. The committee was named by Dr. Sobchak in his role as president and me as chair. We then moved on to have meetings. And the last meeting we had was on June 30th, at which time we were presented with the opportunity to accept a $1 million gift from Brad and Libby Bergman. And as part of that gift, the recognition would be the renaming of the Carlson Center to the Midwest Trust Center. This recommendation comes with the unanimous support of the Facility's Naming Committee as well as the support of Dr. Carlson. I provided a fairly detailed memorandum in the packet, starting at page 46, and then a number of pages that indicate the type of analysis or vetting that was done. As I explained at our April meeting, there are policies in place now that weren't in place a number of years ago that not only establish the Facility's Naming Committee, but established some efforts to do the background checks on individual donors. Same process was used for the Hugh Libby Career Technical Education Center, was used for the Wiley Hospitality and Culinary Academy, was applied here. It was applied probably more broadly because of the name Midwest Trust Center as opposed to simply the individuals. I guess, I think that maybe the best way to handle this is to see if there are questions that I can answer. Trustee Ingram was on the Facility's Naming Committee with me as the two trustees. We identified in the packet the other members of the committee. Diane Davis, the Vice President of the Faculty Association, was on the committee. Dr. Randy Weber ended up succeeding Dr. Sobchak when Dr. Sobchak went off the employee role June 30th. From the Foundation was the President of the Foundation, Sue Parker. Foundation Director, Sean Carona. Sailor Usher was the Student Senate Representative. He is the Student Senate President. And Tom Clayton, who was mentioned earlier by Trustee Snyder, was the administrative appointee of Dr. Sobchak. We also had the benefit of hearing from Emily Bearman, who is the Director of our Performing Arts Series as a non-voting member. And Kate Allen was the facilitator of the committee from her experience as the Foundation and her oversight of the Foundation as a non-voting member as well. So what is on the, what is on the agenda today is ultimately a recommendation of the Facility's Naming Committee to accept the opportunity of $1 million gift from Brad and Libby Bergman and the college agree in recognition of this gift to rename the Carlson Center to the Midwest Trust Center, subject to a written agreement to be reviewed and approved by the president and the college council. I have heard a couple of questions and I'll address those now. Our policy requires at least 20% of any pledge to be paid before any type of renaming or recognition occurs. The Bergmans, in the draft of the agreement, have agreed that they will contribute $250,000 a year for four years. The agreement makes it binding on them and their heirs and assigns. It retains the right of the board, as we do in our policy, to remove the name in our discretion. If the building is destroyed by tornado or ultimately outlives itself, the name could be removed. So the board and the college continue to control that. But nothing would be done until we received the first $250,000. The use of the funds would be solely to support student scholarships. Brad and Libby are committed to helping those who need help financially. It would be directed in large part to those in the creative arts, but not exclusively to them. And at $1 million, the normal assumption is you can generate 5% return, $50,000. We give out a lot of $500 scholarships. So that's a lot of scholarships that can be, can help students for that, for that money. So that's, that's, I put the eligibility criteria in there. This is, although both Brad and Libby have given great service to the college, the distinguished service recognition for naming, while it might fit them, it might fit a whole bunch of other people. Brad's been director of the Foundation or the Chair of the Foundation Board of Directors. They've both been active as they, as they both had their children who have taken hours here. But the recognition is being done based on the $1 million gift for student scholarships. It takes five affirmative votes of the trustees to name or unnamed a building. Trying to think of what else I've heard that I might answer before I ask, take questions. I think I'll just take questions. Trustee Ingram, do you have anything to add as a member of the committee?
No, I think some of the comments of the committee members were very reassuring that we were moving in the right direction. And I will say that. I served as the liaison from the Board of Trustees when Brad was chairing the Foundation. And we, at the end of his year, we were asked to provide some donations to do a scholarship in his honor. And at that time when that was announced, he immediately said he would match those dollars that were being raised. And that's just kind of a good example of who Brad Bergman is. So lovely people, lovely, lovely family. So I feel very good about that.
I do want to, I do want to mention one thing. It's in the packet. It was disclosed to the Naming Committee. And I think it's important that Midwest Trust, through its affiliate FCI advisors, has been the investment advisor to the Foundation since, I believe, 2006. A year, the investments are actually managed by an investment committee of the Foundation, which is made up largely of Brad's competitors. So it is a, it is a group that pays attention to what FCI advisors is doing. A year ago, when I was liaison to the Foundation, a decision was made to do an RFQ, a Request for Qualifications, for an investment advisor for the Foundation funds. That was to be done this spring. Because of COVID, that is going to be done next year. Brad was well aware of that when it was done and welcomes it. His, part of his contributions to the college have been that their fees are lower than market and their return has been higher than market. But it's important that we disclose that. And that was discussed at the Naming Committee. So I think now I'll ask if there are questions from, Trustee Snyder.
I don't actually have a question. I just want to congratulate you and the other committee members. This is a very comprehensive report for the board's consideration. So thank you for your service. I want to thank you in particular for figuring out a reasonable way and path forward that's going to benefit the college on this issue. You know, in my two and a half, three years involvement with colleges, this issue has come up. We've been approached by community members, by students, all with compelling stories that have moved us in some capacity. So I appreciate just having this issue move forward that looks to me to be a great opportunity for the college.
Thank you. Trustee Cook?
Two things. One, I really appreciated you including the support of Dr. Carlson for this change. And I realize that there are several perceptions of his tenure, but nevertheless, he was a foundational part of this college for several years. So I appreciated his support of this change. The second thing I would say is that I'm aware of several encouragements, let's say, that the Bergmans have had with other people who have philanthropy in their minds. And he has steered them towards scholarships of the college. And so I believe that, supporting Trustee Ingram's comments about the quality of the family, they've always kept Johnson County Community College top of mind as their clients ask for ways to contribute to philanthropy. So I would support, I will support this motion.
On the Zoom, Trustee Smith Everett, do you have comments? I realize we don't have a motion on the floor. Maybe we ought to have a motion first.
You, you made a motion, I think, when you.
I said the recommendation was coming. I didn't.
We said I'd motion in a second.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair.
Second.
Did you move? Trustee Ingram moved and Trustee Cross seconded. Thank you for getting me back on the right path. Trustee Cross?
Yes. You know, as Trustee Snyder indicated, and I thank everyone for their service on this issue. It's been an issue for the seven or eight years that I've been a part of campus leadership. Former trustee Lindstrom and Senator Dick Bond introduced me to Rotary. And former President Carlson's a fellow Rotarian. So I'm happy to have his support. I'm very happy to have this behind us. I think Brad and Libby Bergman are quite great examples of the leadership and commitment that we have in our Foundation to the college. So I'm thrilled really all the way around. I know it was 2015, Mr. Chair, you might remember. I raised the issue of renaming the Carlson Center at a retreat on a Saturday. I know that because I got a call, I got a bipartisan inquiry from Senator Bond, a former trustee Carol Sater, and lots of other peoples. So my comment that day led to a whole month of what was I talking about? And we can all agree to disagree as to what his tenure meant. He certainly, President Carlson was instrumental in the establishment of the college as we know it and the prestige it has. So in so many ways, quite frankly, I'm happy to have this issue behind us. I'm happy to have the opportunity in front of us. And I might only wish with Brad Bergman is that he was a Jayhawk. But sadly, he went to Washburn Law, and that's still good. So I thank you, everyone, for your effort. I too, like Dr. Cook, will be supporting this motion.
Trustee Lawson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have some questions. I am in favor of renaming the Carlson Center. I do, of course, have some questions. I have three of those. This, after I reviewed everything, it looks like it sets up an infinite time to advertise a for-profit business on what the taxpayers have invested. So my question is, shouldn't we go with term limits?
Well, that is a policy question for the board that would be, I think Kate Allen, if she's on Zoom, or Emily, or Dr. Bound, or anybody that's been in fundraising would tell you that if you put term limits on this, you will not have $1 million to spend for scholarships.
And why would that be?
Because donors are not going to give the money when they're not going to get the recognition. And I, your comment is about the for-profit business. Emily Bearman actually brought that, brought that up to us before the Naming Committee and looked just around the Midwest. The AT&amp;T Performing Arts Center in Dallas, Verizon Hall at the Kimmel Center for Performing Arts in Philadelphia, the Duke Energy Center for Performing Arts in Raleigh, the Mayo Performing Arts Center in Morristown, New Jersey, the Sprint Center in Kansas City, Missouri, the Providence Medical Center, formerly Verizon Wireless Amphitheatre in Bonner Springs, and the Silverstein Ice Center Arena in Independence were the ones she found just in a quick search of those. So it is certainly not unusual for municipally-owned or nonprofit facilities to be named after a corporate or business donor. I thought it was, I do agree in the sense that I was surprised that people that were donating $1 million of their own money didn't want their own names on the building. But this is a tribute to the employees and the clients of Midwest Trust. And Brad and Libby did not want that to be the people that got that recognition. So that's kind of how that came about. I don't know if that, that's a long answer to your question.
Well, Mr. Chair, I wasn't meaning, I wasn't asking about the unusualness of it. I was asking about that it sets up an infinite amount of time for a profit, for-profit business to get advertising. So will this sound, will it always be Midwest Trust? It sounds like what you said, that this, this company might change. And then, of course, the donor here is not having their name on a building. If this was the Bergmans, I, I don't think I would mind. In those cases of the companies that you talked about, most of them bore a large part of the cost. And when you talk, the sheet on page 58 breaks down the cost of the second largest building we have, which is the Reneer Center. It's 160,000 square feet. It was a donation of $5 million in 2012. So that was eight years ago. And now we're accepting $1 million for the largest building we have, which that's the Carlson Center at 163,000 square feet. Not only does that undercut our threshold standard for any other building on campus, but in eight years, the price for that size of a building should not lose 80% in value. Every year, our county appraiser roughly gives us, you know, a 5% markup on the value of buildings. So that is, quick math, 250,000 times eight years, 2 million added value, plus the 5 million. So we're looking about 7 to 9 million for today's standard for the Reneer Center. That should be at least the standard for the Carlson Center. We're getting slightly less than 10% value for our largest building. So I think it's an important question to ask about the advertising rights that the company will receive. There's clearly a benefit that they will have, brand awareness, business loyalty. There's clearly a benefit that they will have, brand awareness, business loyalty. If people like a college show, they are, associate that experience with that business name. They get advertising rights that last forever. So, in actuality, that can cost them near zero for a business. So, what are the benefits that they get and how can we offset those? But also, it's a little bit confusing for the public because if we have a, you know, a company name that's different from our brand on a large building that is on two main streets, this could look like we sold off a part of our building. So, the concern is, how do we address that for the public so that they know that we indeed are still the deed holder of the building with either a larger font above the name so people don't get confused and we don't, we don't harm our brand with a competing business name that we would normally have as a personal name? So, these are some of my concerns that, you know, I love watching the Kansas City Royals play baseball, and when they advertise and they say, "We are proud sponsors of the Kansas City Royals," well, you know, if this board goes in that direction, I look forward to Midwest Trust announcing in their camp, company-wide advertisements that they are proud sponsors of Johnson County Community College in their materials and marketing. So, there is an enormous benefit for companies to have their name on buildings. So, how do we offset those?
Do you have a second question?
That's it.
Trustee Smith Everett. Any comments? No comments? All right, Trustee Ingram.
Are, are we following policy and procedure in doing this?
Yes.
I'm good with that. Thank you.
Kelsey has been, I should have, I should have identified Kelsey, too, because she has been, Kelsey Nazar, our general, our director of legal services, has been involved also to make sure that we follow the policies that the board has adopted.
And, and, and I don't mean to seem redundant, but I think that's an important question that I'm not hearing. We are following policy and procedure as we make this motion to move forward with this name change. As part of the naming committee, I felt like it was very well vetted. And Trustee Snyder has already spoken to the massive information that we have received and felt really good about that. So, I feel very good about this.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Trustee Cross.
Kelsey Nazar is okay with this?
She is, she is nodding her head up and down yes.
I just wanted to make sure her law license was sufficiently online.
(laughing).
It was a joke.
Yeah, see, everybody's, everybody's smiling another mask, Lee. All right. If there are no further, if there's no further discussion, the motion before the body is to accept the recommendation of the Facility Naming Committee that the college accept the opportunity of a $1 million gift from Brad and Libby Bergman and that the college agree in recognition of this gift to rename the Carlson Center to the Midwest Trust Center, subject to the written agreement to be reviewed and approved by the president and college council. Is there anybody has any questions about what the motion is? If not, all in favor say yes.
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 Those opposed, no?
No.
That passes 6 to 1 with Trustee Lawson voting no. I want to thank the members of the Facility's Naming Committee. Again, it was one of our early meetings by Zoom when we got together, and we had two meetings. The last one, I think, lasted about an hour and a half as we went through the recommendations. So, that's above and beyond for everybody that was on that committee, so I want to thank them. That's all new business. Under old business, I'm going to ask, last month's meeting, we had discussion about our official publication, our official newspapers, and it kind of got off track a little bit talking about the pitch and the Kansas City Star and the Shawnee Mission Post, none of which meet the statutory criteria. But at the end of the day, Trustee Cook, looking back at the transcript, and again, I've reviewed this with Ms. Nazar, Trustee Cook called for the question on the original motion, which was to approve the Kansas City, or the Gardner News and the Legal Record. It was seconded and we voted on that, and that, that motion was, was adopted by the body. However, it can be, it can be argued that that was simply a motion to call the question and that we then didn't vote on the actual motion to approve the campus, the Gardner News and the Legal Record as our official newspaper. So, I would ask for a motion to add to the agenda the consideration of our official newspapers.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Legal Record and Gardner News be designated as the official newspaper of the college.
We have to first add it to the agenda.
Oh. I move that we add this topic to the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Trustee Snyder and seconded by Trustee Cook that we add an agenda item regarding the official newspaper of the college. Is there any discussion about that motion to add that to the agenda? Not all in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed, no?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Now, your motion would be in order, Trustee Snyder.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Legal Record and Gardner News be designated as the official newspaper of the college.
Been moved, moved by Trustee Cook, Trustee Snyder, and seconded by Trustee Ingram to officially designate the Gardner News and the Legal Record as the official publications for the college. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, all in favor say yes.
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 Opposed, no? That motion carries. Thank you for helping me clean up what I didn't clean up last month. We're now ready for the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a grouping of items that are of routine nature or have been reviewed through the committee and are presented typically in one motion and, and approved in one motion. Is there any item on the consent agenda that any trustee would like to have considered If not, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, moved by Dr. Cook, seconded by Trustee Snyder to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor say yes.
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 Opposed, no? Motion carries unanimously. We have no executive session. Dr. Brown, are we ready for a motion to adjourn?
I believe so.
Will it keep going?
No, sir.
Okay. Do I hear such a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Cook and seconded by Trustee Ingram that we adjourn. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? That motion also carries unanimously. Thank you all for your time and attention tonight. Thank you, Cabinet.
Thank you. Where's the cabinet? Come on.
Oh. Thank you.